Hey, I call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council the order on Monday, March 11th, 2024 at six o'clock PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs. Sandy Eric. Here.
Did let us know he was unable to attend. We will move to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Sandy. Need a special on agenda. Done, council please vote. It is approved, takes us into the public hearings. The first public hearing is public hearing A, public hearing on proposed amendment to the Nevada urban renewal area. We will open that public hearing. Karen, did we receive any comments?
No comments.
Is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing about the amendment to the Nevada urban renewal area? Done, we'll close that public hearing, move to resolution number fifty-five A, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area for two into section four oh three point four of the code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan amendment for the Nevada urban renewal area.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason and Dane. Any discussion on resolution fifty-five A? Done, council please vote. It is approved, it takes us to resolution number fifty-six, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution authorizing amended development agreement with Nevada Dev LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Henry, any discussion there? Done, council please vote. It is approved, takes us to B, public hearing on proposed development agreement with Feltoner Properties LLC. We'll open that public hearing. Karen, did we receive any comments?
No comments.
Anyone here to speak on the development agreement with Feltoner Properties? Seeing none, we close the public hearing, moving to resolution number fifty-seven, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving development agreement with Feltoner Properties LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy and Jason, discussion there.
This is something we had set up a long time ago, right?
Yes, it is. We just didn't really get the development agreement set in place. So, but yeah, this is something we passed. I want to say it was last year around this time for their apartments that they received the award on.
Okay. I think in the future, we need to be a little more discerning about doing stuff like this, especially when it's their own personal living space. Normally, this is for rental properties or stuff like that where they're improving the upstairs. I know as somebody had said, that this building is going to be long before or long after they're gone. So this is still good in a way, but it's kind of tough to swallow that we're helping to improve somebody's personal home space.
I do agree, and I've heard comments like that from people in the community previously and again leading up to this. Like Jason said, I do think the building will be there long after they're gone. And so this money obviously is going to go towards things that will make that building better going forward as well. But I do think there's a little bit of an appearance issue with it, even though I think in the long run, it's beneficial.
Now I'd like to check back to see, because she did speak on when we originally went through this, she did speak and I thought she was going to be redoing some of it or renovating some of it to rent out. But I just recently heard that she was, it was going to be more of her family that was living there. So I, at the time, I did not know that.
Also, the grant is based on the building, not the occupancy. So I think, and that's what we voted on, was pledging our, you know, support to the grant application.
Else? Council, please vote. It's approved, takes us to C, FY twenty-four budget amendment number one, public hearing. Karen, did we receive any comment?
No comments.
Anyone here to speak in the public hearing on the budget amendment number one? Then we'll close, public hearing, moving to resolution number fifty-eight, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendment number one.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Dane, discussion there. Done, council please vote. It is approved, taking us to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Henry. A discussion, council please vote. It is approved, taking us to the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. First, it's special treat here. We have the Sons of the American Revolution presenting a good citizenship or bronze good citizenship award. So if you'd like to make your way to the podium over there and present your award, you can have the floor.
Thank you, millionaire Barker and council members and citizens. We first heard of some of the fine work and really selfless program of one of the high school sophomore here Dakota Davis in helping to make the lives of the veterans at the Iowa Veterans Home a little bit better. And from the results of his work, over four hundred veterans received packages that did exactly that. So as a representative of the Sons of the American Revolution, and this is Randy Lyon, he's with the Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War. We want to honor Dakota with the bronze good citizenship award from the Sons of the American Revolution. And also that goes with the certificate. And Randy has from the Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War, the certificate of commendation. So the old soldier's home was originally a place for many of the Civil War veterans to find respite and and end out their lives on a high note. And the work continues today. So thank you for making that a little bit better.
Very well summarized. Thank you. Appreciate what you do and a great example for your peers to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Family members.
So, where you want?
Henry, are you lonely over there?
If part of considering taking more to school. I think I can see everybody. Just a little, there you go. On more? I'll leave.
Very nice. Go avoid your sophomore forever. So if you don't, someone to help him out in their places.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Good job, Dakota.
Yeah, thank you, Dakota. It's very heartwarming to see young folks that have a part for philanthropy. So we appreciate it. Continuing on in the public forum, is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum this evening? Oh, yeah, we have Scott.
Hello, Mr. Rockner from Sports Bowl. Just have some open discussion about the use of the fieldhouse for a event. I lose this, we made some maps of fieldhouse. So as we know, the fieldhouse can do to all of us. Of course. My wife and I like to do new things.
So. Good chat about you.
So what you see here is the fieldhouse map. We're bringing a American cornhole state championship to the fieldhouse Friday night before Pizza Pie Loser and then Saturday during the day, and they should wrap up relatively close to concert time. Looking to bring, Friday night, we'll probably bring sixty-five to a hundred players to the fieldhouse and looking at seventy-five to a hundred and fifty possibly on Saturday to compete for their state finals and their titles. So just we've been here before, kind of. But knowing that it's the first time the fieldhouse is going to have an ask of this, we just want to know kind of what the guidance is. We know Park and Rex is okay with us applying for a liquor license. But just looking to the council to make sure before we go through that step, applying for a liquor license or temporary liquor license for the event to sell beer, because can't really play bags without a beer if you're if you're a bagger. But we know that's the next step is to apply for our five-day temp license and get our dram shop. Just wanted to see that. Okay, that we proceed that way and see if there's any issues that we, that we see.
Tim would kind of have a, sorry, I don't know who was.
I was just going to say thank you for bringing it forward. I think you both do some great things and for the community, appreciate thinking outside the box. And I think we all want to see the fieldhouse utilize its highest potential. So I think everyone's question is going to be flooring. So we'll let Tim answer that.
Yeah, I know you and I had that conversation about if a beer or a hundred beers gets spilt on that floor, it's not going to affect it in any way, shape or form.
One of the things that we asked about Scott's event when he was presenting the park board was just keeping that. And Scott has assured us that they will do that and that he will have. Um, you know, I think he's got a really good event. He's got it planned out well. Sure a lot of people do. And this plan to do. And we offer back to the um, this come up. Things good, I can read some additional people.
Sounds like go the next step.
We just wanted to make sure because we don't have that hard professional and this is a first.
Thank you.
My biggest concern would be the surface. I mean, obviously, we've allowed things like this on other city property before. So if you're comfortable with the surface, then yeah. Think it's exciting to have more people coming from out of town to see this facility. That's exactly what I want, so.
Well, and expanding the Pizza Palooza with a different event is cool, too.
I think Scott, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that you know, hopefully this is an annual.
Yeah, correct. That is correct. So I reached out to the American Cornhole League to bring his name is James and his so Southern County Baggers, so they're called SoCo Baggers. That's his organization and he's already stepped forward to say this is a great venue. I will pledge this forward already to make this. So we've reached out. He runs great tournaments. I went out to Boone. They play in the hotel there, the hotel serves liquor. Very, very well-mannered group of individuals. But they all had a drink in their hand the whole time. But he's, he's got a great following and a good group to or so.
Sounds good.
Everybody good? Okay, thank you. Got your answer.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Now in the public forums, Louie?
Okay. I have one question because it's come this season that everybody wants their place cleaned up and we got to find a place to take it, dump it. Because there have been people asking me, where can I take it?
There is a free date coming up in Ames for the, that Marla's.
It's a free thing. We need a dump place here in town.
Well, I'm just, I'm just talking about an option for now because we don't have one now. But this spring, there is a day that folks can take it there and all the haulers will take it.
Well, it's going to be pretty darn soon. You should not have to take the Ames. I don't care if we do it or what, you should not have to take the Ames. They don't reach me. Can't have a dump place here in Nevada. I mean, put it down soon. And then I'll give, I'll give you some credit that S fourteen by cemetery, that street that turned out good and it's nice. And then I give some credit, not too much. Then I won up by, I can't, wherever it's at, I'll throw it fairway. That what we did, you guys just did. That turned out nice. Now, what I heard that we also do by elementary school, probably the first that S three can put you up.
Yeah, they're doing a project by the school.
Yeah, that's elementary school right there. I'm glad that needs to be nut. So otherwise, I'd ask you, we need that place now. This is that time of year and we should not have to take the Ames. And you know, we can't have one here in Nevada at all. Don't you agree?
We've been working on it and we're trying to get it.
That's what the old saying, 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 saying again.
We're not done with it. We're not done.
To get a dump place here in Nevada. It'd be that much.
We definitely don't have an actual location for a dump place, Louie. That's, that's the, that's the one thing that we're trying to find out is we're trying to wait till our wastewater treatment facility is done so we can potentially have a new location.
Well, that'd be a place to have it because you got a gate there. And then if you do get a dump place, put a camera up and you can catch because it's not taking stuff that ain't supposed to. Don't you agree?
And that's been the holdup is waiting for the wastewater plant because that's been everybody's top potential place to look at.
But you know, I gave you some credit. But it'd be nice to get a dump, because we need one, put it down quick.
Thank you, Louie.
Because there are people I've been taking, doing stuff for them. So we need one pretty quick. I mean, pretty soon.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Seeing none, we close the public forum, moving to old business A, ordinance ten fifty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance admitting chapter forty-one, public health and safety city code by adding language pertaining to storage tanks, third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Discussion, council please vote.
So Ryan has been doing some research on the former tanks that have been underground and I think we're, we should be good to go. I think he was checking on two or three more additional locations that used to have underground storage tanks, but I don't know if he has gotten any answers from those particular locations yet.
At the, excuse me, not the two on on East Lincoln. They discovered the map that was provided as some that are marked as still there that currently are not. So I'm doing my research to figure out if they were thinking in.
Oh, thank you. Regular, it's really concerned about.
Moves to B, approved pay request number thirty-three for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase two from Williams Brothers Construction in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason Sandy. Question, council please vote. Approved, takes us to C, prepay request number twenty-two for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase three from Boomerang Corporation in the amount of eighteen thousand twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Henry. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to D, approved pay request number sixteen for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase four from on-track construction LLC in the amount of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Sandy. No discussion, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to new business A, approved five-day class C retail alcohol license for Great Caters of Iowa Incorporated, DBA Great Caters of Iowa, two twenty H Avenue effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-four through April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. And it's approved, takes us to B, resolution number sixty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution to approve adoption of IRL third-party inspection reporting through web-based system.
Good evening. So third-party reporting is pretty common. The fire code allows the fire code official to determine what manner they receive reports from contractors, businesses. The entire state has a lot of this going on with Compliance Engine. IRL is another party that, company that came about. We've, I personally have experiences with Compliance Engine as a state fire marshal that I just didn't feel like it was good customer service. And there are some things that I just didn't feel comfortable with. Basically, where this comes into a play is if I walk into a facility that, you know, last council meeting, we had apartment fire. The fire alarm had not been inspected in two years. And so if I miss that month that it's due, I don't know when all of these alarms are due. So the people that come in and maintain the system would report to IRL. And then they would handle the compliance until it comes to a point where the fire chief needs to get involved, like they're not updating their fire alarm or they're not fixing a broken trouble line. I'm not naive to think that they don't, the contractors don't charge the customer that nineteen dollars. But most folks throughout, like I said, the metro are doing this as a way to supplement staff to assure that places that we don't get into, because we don't do full-time inspections unless there's a complaint that they are maintaining their fire alarm. It costs about three hundred dollars for somebody to come in and maintain their fire alarm, to have a contractor come in. They generally charge about a hundred and ninety dollars an hour. And it usually takes two hours. And so they're paying that money already to maintain their fire alarm. But what if they're not? They're saving three hundred dollars. And so, so this is a kind of a checks and balances that we feel is appropriate and it'll help supplement our compliance with fire code.
Just any chance this helps with our fire rating by chance?
We're currently at a three ISO rating. In order to get to a two, we would need full-time staffing. Other than that, I, if we had full-time staffing twenty-four hours a day, we would clearly ask for a review and go to an ISO two.
Okay.
What's from council?
How many of these do we have in town, do you think?
That's a good question. I find fire alarms about every week. The false alarms is kind of another big issue that we have. We've got a hundred and fifty-three false alarms in the last two years. And so when you talk about recruiting and retention and trying to get staff up that are volunteer at two in the morning for a fire alarm that's faulty. I think there's some benefits with the quality of our fire alarms in our community, but I mean, we're talking hood and duck systems, fire alarms and sprinkler systems. So I mean, I can tell you, I know of at least fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, at least fifty. But there's ones that we walk into and go, oh, I didn't know you had a fire alarm or that they weren't maintaining them. And so if we, we recently caught one on liquor license inspection that they had to bring the fire alarm up to, up to code and stuff. So change of occupancy, when Georgia's changed, they came in and upgraded their fire alarm to current code. And so so we do think that there's a benefit to quality fire alarms and reducing our nuisance alarms. And there's no cost to the city on this.
I'll move for approval.
Option one.
Option one.
Second.
Dane, further discussion? And council please vote. It is approved, takes us to approve request to purchase bunker gear for fire department.
So the reason I brought bunker gear is because I, as a habit, don't try and get the most expensive thing. And have you approved that? We have twenty thousand five hundred dollars approved for five sets of bunker gear. We cannot purchase five sets of bunker gear with twenty thousand five hundred at the gear that is more durable. So we are going to do four sets. We're also recently completed an AFG grant request for eighteen sets of bunker gear through FEMA. I'm also putting in for the NVFC seven sets of bunker gear grant that they'll award. So if we hit some of those, it'll help us out. But bunker gear is the most important thing. One of the things we've found is we try and be fiscally responsible, but what we're finding in the world of bunker gear, cheaper isn't always better. And so this is a gear that is approximately ten years old. You can see that's got this stitching coming out on this. And so it's just not holding up to the full ten years that we'd like to see. This was the most recent purchase of Viking gear. Similar thing, we have repairs and rips and it doesn't, the outer shell doesn't seem to hold up really good to any sort of contact. So this is the Fire Dex gear that we're asking for. They recently trial wore three sets and we purchased six last year. This code has been through four structure fires for four fires, I should say, not all of them for structure. You can see that just the durable quality. They're also switching to the black color that seems well and well fair and folks seem to like to look true. So that was the change we made. But one of the most important things I think about this gear is the reduction of PFOS, which is the forever chemicals, the foam firefighting foam. It's an oil for the oil and water repellent capability to the moisture barrier. This gear and other gears are getting it is the stead, stead airliner, stead air four thousand liner. Because the part of the moisture liner that's closest to the body is actually encapsulated. So those forever chemicals are kind of reduced away from exposure. We do a lot of great things to reduce our cancer risk, but it was, I'll be honest with you, it was only three years ago, the fire service learned that they were making our gear with PFOS chemicals. And so, so that's a that's a very big concern because I think if you look at some of the recent news with Des Moines Fire Department having ten firefighters actively working that have cancer and one recently died of cancer. Uh, we've had a cancer scare on our fire department. Uh, so I think anything that we can do, we have a responsibility to try and reduce that cancer risk. In a occupation that is very prone to cancer risk. So, uh, so, and to make up for asking for the different gear, the more expensive gear. That I think is more durable, uh, we've reduced the number to four instead of five.
Move to approve option one. Second.
And then Henry. Question, council, please vote. Prove takes us to de-approve requests for purchase of benches from Main Street Nevada for downtown.
Uh, so it's, I believe it's been on the list for as long as I have been here to replace the current benches that are downtown. Um, they've been. Uh, some of them broken over the years. They get really heavy when you're trying to move them. Uh, and then to match our current benches that we have down in City Hall, uh, talking with Main Street, I kind of provided three options and. They liked the arch on the back a little bit better. Um, so. Um, these were the options that I, I saw available online. There was another one from Home Depot, but that one is currently sold out and the price was around sixteen hundred as well. Northgate six foot bench with the arch back is actually the cheapest and it comes in right under a thousand dollars. For it compared to the other two, which are over sixteen hundred or sixteen and above.
If shop that line them, I guess nobody sat in any of these.
No one has sat in them though.
We bought the ones out front. We did fundraise for those, but with the Camelot and others doing fundraisers downtown, it didn't seem like it would be good for us to step on. Those efforts at the moment.
These are all gonna be for downtown?
Correct, yeah.
How many?
Nine of them.
What happens to the old ones out of curiosity?
Uh, I, I believe there's seven that have names on them and then the other two do not. Uh, so we'll try to reach out to the families that donated and see if they want those benches or what they want to do with those benches. We can probably pull the plaque off of them. Um, but the ones that are. Um, that have no plaque on them, chances are they'll probably bust when we move them because that's what ha, that's what has happened with some of the other ones that we've tried moving. So unfortunately, we probably won't be able to deal much with them. One of the. One of the things that was brought up was potentially moving them over on the trails, but, uh. There's just not a lot of options for that.
I wasn't so worried about the benches themselves, more the, the families whose names are on them, just.
Yeah. No, we'll definitely reach out to the families that donated money to them and go see what they'd like to do with them. They want them at their house or where.
Thanks.
I mean, if we can repurpose them somewhere else, I think we should try at least.
Right.
Henry, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I know just through conversations, because there's a couple individuals who are family members of them. Um, that was one of their questions was if they were gonna get an, an opportunity to maybe have some input on what happens to the one with their name for their family member. Um, I know I have had a few people say they'd love to see them repurposed if they could be, but. Of course, that's if they hold together for moving them, because I know we have had. A lot of issues with them, uh, moving them. Um. But I do think that's something, if we do have that opportunity and there are some that might be worth repurposing or looking at, that might be something we should consider.
Yeah, and then o- option three actually does provide, uh, the availability to put an additional plaque on there if you want it. Uh, I did not include that on there because it, it does cost extra and we should be able to add those if we want to do that. I don't want to say it was around two hundred to two hundred and fifty. So if someone wanted to donate. Funds to do that, they would be more than willing to do that or would be willing to do that, then we could pu- potentially add that as well on it. But option three does provide it. It's. It's a little bit different. There's basically a screw, two screws and then a, a placeholder on the back that screws them together and. But they're, they look very similar to the plaques that are in, on our current ventures.
Are they like witty things? Are we gonna be worried about kids moving them around or anything?
I don't know how much they weigh. They are steel. All, all three options are steel, so they will be heavy. They just won't be that solid stone like our current ones are. Um, but. I would say they're probably around the same weight as our current ones out in front of City Hall, which those are still pretty heavy. And we haven't, we haven't necessarily had any issues with moving them with those being moved, but. Any, any structure that is not bolt, bolted in, there's a potential of that happening.
Okay, we had to lug them around for Pizza Pailooza last year. They were pretty, pretty heavy.
Just probably another good comment. They could be functional for something else too, since we're doing more events downtown. Well, I'll move to approve option three.
Oh, second.
Dane, discussion. Being done, council, please vote. And it's approved, um, which takes us to report, starting with city administrator.
Uh, we had a downtown rehabilitation meeting. Emily and I met with Jacob from Rod Curtis Architecture. And he's doing an assessment of what buildings he believes is, would be best for grant submission and being awarded for those grants. Uh, Emily did send him a list of do all is still in residence in that, so he will be working towards that. Man and I had a parking meeting this last Friday. Try to figure out ways we can improve the parking and really the awareness of the, of the parking that's available downtown as well. Because there's quite a bit of parking spots that we have. I just, uh, I don't think they're utilized as, as much. At any DC meetings, Main Street meetings, legislation update with IMU, their hot topic was the rate increases from Alliant. Uh, Pizza Pailooza. Brenda and I took a site visit and looked at cobblestone, uh, the hotel group and checked that facility out. Their newest built one. Had a meeting and Karen and I met with Melissa with EMC or not EMC, sorry, that was one of the insurance groups. But ICAP is the one that we're going to be sticking with. Uh, but we, we met with Melissa from Nick Insurance to discuss possibilities of switching over to EMC. Um, T-Mobile, the department heads and I met with T-Mobile for the geo tabs. That is the. Um, a geo tab is what would plug into our computer systems for our vehicles, which would allow for maintenance. And with our street department doing a lot more of the maintenance on those vehicles. It, it acts like a little computer system, so we're able to figure out what's, what's going on first. So. Department heads most likely will be the first ones to install those on their vehicles, see how they like it, see what type of diagnostics they're able to get from it. And if everyone likes them, then we'll move on and putting, putting on all of our fleets for that, uh, fleet vehicles. And then also at a staff meeting. You have my report, so if you guys have any questions.
Were you at the art commission meeting too?
Was, yeah. Um, so. The next thing that we're going to discuss, and I did reach out to Wade actually today, um, which something we discussed in the parking meeting. Was crosswalks that would be, um, in areas that would lead to public parking spots. Um, so I'll talk with them about that at our next meeting. Uh, but really what we were discussing was which, which route we want to take on. If it's a mural or what, what really the community wants. So they're going to be doing some background, uh. Getting some background information from people and the survey. And then, uh, the other thing is they want to. Um, figure out locations for those murals. Or some sort of a statue like at the Butterfly Garden. Um, but yeah, that's kind of what we discussed and. Questions?
Moving on from my report, I won't. Um, double up what Jordan talked about. Um, few things, the league had its local leaders day, which was the first time they'd done it this big and it was really well attended. Um, so just going through legislation that's in impacting cities of the state. Then it was, if you all remember, a year ago, we went down and had testimony at the railroad committee and this, for the senate transportation committee talked about railroads. Sat across from Union Pacific and Story County folks kind of let them have it a little bit. Which got them in meeting back there, countywide meeting and, um. Our public safety department and the sheriff's department had good reports for the improvements on the number of block crossings and the times that were blocked and the. Responses that, you know, for public safety to get around. So, um. It was nice to be able to have some positive things to say about the. Improvement in communication from the railroad and hopefully the fact that they have made clear they want to do this again next year. Hopefully they'll. Stay communicating well and be responsive to those issues. Um, Main Street America was in town, which was nice. It was the new CEO and we were her first rural Main Street visit. So it was kind of neat to. For them to pick us to be the first to showcase and need to show all those projects. And otherwise, just, there was a mix and mingle. The Masons did, and then they had a pancake breakfast. So they're doing a lot of good work over there. Any questions for me?
I'll, uh, add on to your railroad crossings. I did get more phone calls at the bus burn about. When the. Railroads are gonna be closed. Unfortunately, they're usually the day of or the morning of, um, and that's because of the workers were notified that morning. That they'd be closing it. So at least they are communicating it as soon as they know about it. So. They can just get some more lead time. That'd be great.
Made quite a bit of noise that day, so at least it kind of helped. For council reports.
Oh, yeah, Lincoln Highway Days meeting, um. Moving forward with that. Putting some things around this year. We're trying to some new things and we'll see how they work out. As we figure out what those new things are, we'll let everybody else know.
Just kind of a, an update on Pizza Pailooza and, and, uh, ticket sales. Um, it seems like we've got a higher portion of people. Coming from all over the state this year than past years. And I just think that's really cool. Just an opportunity to showcase Nevada more. I know we've already seen the last couple of years what it can do, but. It, it's cool to see all these different zip codes coming in on the ticket sales. It's, it's a cool thing.
Great. Anything to add?
Appreciate the support and, uh, both the third party and the bunker gear.
And so we all get out in the nice weather. Um, not going to visit about economic development tonight, but I did want to talk a bit about the homeowner grants that the. Uh, the community received from the Story County Community Foundation, no, Story County Housing Trust Fund. So, um, I am proposing the following timelines for that. So. Uh, there'll be eighty thousand dollars of trust fund money matched with ten thousand of city money. Uh, we're finalizing the application, uh, so we will not release the press release until we can put. Copies of the application here at City Hall as well as the library. So. Uh, folks that meet the income, uh, guidelines will be able to, uh, apply for up to ten thousand dollars. Of funding support. Will have a minimum request of a thousand and just to stress, they have to live within the city limits of Nevada. Um, it's really designed for, uh, to meet and remedy problems to improve the overall living conditions of homes. Uh, safety issues, critical life issues. Um, one of the things to keep in mind is that folks will actually have a deed restriction placed on their home. And at the end of the five-year period, the full loan will be forgiven. Uh, must be a single family household. Property taxes and assessments and utilities have to be current. Uh, it must comply with our nuisance ordinances. Uh, the expected life of the structure should be at least twenty years. And our building official will be the one that, uh, deems that. Must be safe for the inspector as well as contractors that would be entering the home. And the city inspector will actually inspect the property after the application, uh, has been completed. To ensure that the, uh, the work was actually done. Uh, we're requiring homeowners to submit two bids and estimates when their application comes in. Uh, they must have lived in their home for a year before they can apply. And, um, and they can't received any other funding assistance in the last five months. So. Uh, the other big thing to remember is that the work cannot be started until applications are approved. Uh, and they'll have till next May to actually complete that. They'll need to turn in all their documentation, uh, by the first of June so that we can ensure that all the funds are spent. Before the end of the fiscal year. So I'm gonna conduct a, a couple informational meetings, Monday, March twenty-fifth. And then I'll also do one on a Saturday, April sixth. So please help me get the word out about that. Um, we'll do both of them here at the council chambers. Again, we'll have the application which is at the library in City Hall. We'll ask people to return them in a sealed envelope here to City Hall and they have till the thirty-first of May to turn those in. So. That's the program that we have in front of us. It'll be a great opportunity, uh, for a number of folks in their communities. So. Direct folks to my email or have them call me if they have questions. And then as soon as we get the application approved, we'll get the date changed on the press release. And have Marla's help push it out. Any questions for me?
Thanks. Sounds well thought out.
Marla's got anything? Public safety. Ian. Aaron.
Just a reminder, next council meeting will be the six o'clock public hearing and then the regular meeting will start at six fifteen. No work, Brad.
Anything for Aaron Clanton?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Council, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, then we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.